Questions? Do you need your list? Do you need your list? Or do you know what else we have to discuss?
Oh, the street?
Call this regularly meeting in order. Call the order.
Mayor Querom.
Here.
Councilmember Newman.
Here.
Gomez.
Here.
McCransky.
Here.
McCall.
Here.
Please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance. So, to begin tonight's meeting, we're going to have, we're going to hold in a public hearing. And this has to do with the proposed federally funded community development block grant, project in the amount of $406,910 to be used towards the lining of Senator Silver on Marion Street. This is the area over by Lincoln School between Euclid and Fifth Street. And the city also proposes to expand $50,000 in non-CDBG funds on this project. Teresa, will you go ahead? Or do you want me to just bring up Shug?
Hi, everybody. I'm-
Sorry, Shug, you might have to hit the button on the very top of the mic. Wait until the green light comes on. Or you can slide it out. Can't see it. Or Quinn, maybe you can give her a hand?
Yeah.
I think they can.
Just tap it.
Yeah, and they'll just need, just state your name for, for the record.
Yep. I'm Shug Rosenbach from North Central Council of Governments in Ottawa, Illinois. And I have Ally Braveway with me also. She's new, so she wanted to come over and see how this is going. The city of Princeton would like to apply for a CDBG grant, which is a community development block grant. And they want, they intend on asking for $406,910 for the application. And it is, like the mayor said, we're going to do East Marion. We're going to line the sewers on East Marion from Euclid to Fifth. The total cost of the project is $456,910. And the grant administration and construction are both in that. The $27,000 is the grant administration for the two-year process. And the $379,910 is the remainder of the grant funds for the construction. And $50,000 from the city. They get points for that. If you, if the city puts in some money, they get extra points for that. And these are so competitive, that's a very good thing. The purpose of the project is eliminate the infiltration in the sanitary sewer lines, which occurs during heavy rains and causes basement backups. Which is the health and safety that is necessary to apply. The area has plain tiles, sewers, and they're poor condition. And they videotaped it. They did the televising in June of 2019. And it showed the cracks and broken tiles. And we'll definitely use that in our application narrative. No city residents will be displaced because of this project. And the city does have on file their anti-displacement and relocation assistance plan if needed. Does anyone have any questions or comments that you want to make on this project?
Shug, could I clarify something?
Absolutely.
We're actually going to do a full replacement of the sewer, not the lining.
Really?
Yes.
News. Really?
Well, it's actually in poor enough condition that it requires replacement.
And you're going to do the in-kind, I take it, so no permits necessary?
Correct. There will not be EPA permit required.
Hmm.
This is, this is a great project. I mean, it's, it's long, long overdue. And then we will use our, our street referendum tax money to put the street all back together again. So, it's a combination project. It's, again, well, long overdue.
Okay. I'm glad you said that. Because I thought you were lining those sewers. Because as we were going for surveys, Ally and I were jumping puddles and had no camera with me. So, I didn't get to get pictures of it, but it needs it very badly. I will fix that on the minutes. And I will send you new minutes, Pete, okay?
Okay.
Perfect.
So, the cost that was quoted, the $456,910, that's with the replacement of the sewer?
That's correct.
Yes, that's-
We've applied for this before a couple of times, haven't we?
Um, last year, yeah. And last year, I don't know if it's a good thing or a bad thing, give and bring up, it was, that, the city of Princeton missed that grant by one point. You're so disgusting.
So, we get, do we get points for trying again?
You know what the great thing about it is? When you get to try again, is when they don't get funded, we, we talked to DCO after that. Say, "What happened?" And they said, "Threat to health and safety, missed it by one point." Oh, my God. So, at least we know what area now we need more work in. And it's the threat to health and safety, which Pete sent stuff, Teresa sent stuff, Dean and Dave sent us stuff. So, we're just going to put all that combination in to give a better narrative on the threat to health and safety and what, how bad it is.
Perfect.
And had I had sent and taken pictures, that would have been a better thing. But it could rain between now and then. I hope not for-
Sure did it down last night.
Yeah. So, if anybody happens to be on Euclid, or between, on Marion, between Fifth and Euclid, and it's pouring down rain, get pictures and let Pete or Teresa have them and, and get them to us. That would be fantastic. The program details, we'll finish that. The program details, there's 18 million available for distribution on the August 3rd applications. The maximum per community that you can take is $550,000. And the minimum is $250,000. So, it's more than, even if your project's over $550,000, you can apply and get that. But you have to find your own funding for that. And you have to prove that, that you can do that. Of course, Chandler and Associates is the engineer. They've done the design, the plans. No permit is required from IPA because it's an in-kind line, oop, in-kind replacement at the same location. So, they are doing anything different, bigger, smaller, or anything, you're saving one out, putting another one in, so it's no, no permits needed for that. The funds for the block grants are from, for the state go from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. That's where the money comes from. And the Illinois Department of Commerce then distributes the funds through Illinois, except for those that are, get direct entitlement, which is like Cook County, Will County, Peoria County, and bigger counties. They directly get their own money. The funds are dispersed. And the main benefiting factor on getting the grants is your community has to have 51% of low to moderate income persons living in the area or the community. In this case, we went down Marion Street and got surveys to prove that it was. And it came, the goal at that point in time when we did the surveys a couple of weeks ago was 58.7%. So, of the 406,910 CDBG funds that the city is asking for, $238,856.17 will directly benefit the low to moderate income persons in that area. The next thing that the DCO would like, the Department of Commerce, would, would like to know is what the community needs and how, how community development and housing needs are for the city of Princeton. Princeton normally has that 10-year list, we used it last year. So, I'm going to go off of what that list was. And if there's anything else that needs to be added, just yell. And I will add it to the list. It's quite extensive, and it totals $12,962. So, you've got your sanitaries, storm and sanitary, water treatment upgrades at $2 million, sanitary lift stations for them totaling $600,000. The work truck for $40,000, sewer line and replacements at $1,005,000. And the continued, is it SCADA? SCADA, I'm supposed to. System upgrades at $60,000. On the water side, you've got meter replacements at $800,000. Sixth Street Water Main Extension for $1 million. North Water Main Looping for $912,000. Well rehabilitation at $200,000. And Greencrop Water Main Replacement at $150,000. On the street side, you have residential street maintenance at $3 million. Deco Pleasant, West Long Streets and Bicentennial Drive improvements at $350,000. Brick Street curb replacements, $250,000. Sidewalk construction and replacement at $150,000. Parking lot improvements at $450,000. A garbage truck at $160,000. Work truck for $40,000. The buildings, City Hall improvements, $300,000. And old water treatment plant demolition at $100,000. City vehicle fleet, the fire engine for $730,000. And police cars, four total at $170,000. Does anybody have anything they want to add to that? That you can think of off the top of your head?
Thank you.
We'd love to find ways to get all of them. The application records are filed at the city of Princeton. You'll have them when we're done. They're also in our office. We keep all the main ones in our office also. Our office is open Monday through Friday, 8 to 4. And if you are interested in viewing the files or discussing the project any further, just call our office and visit during hours. Make an appointment, and we'll make sure we're there. And if you have no further comments-
If there's anything to be added to that list or adjusted, is that something we can go ahead and do before the application is submitted?
For the-
No.
Needs list? It has to be talked about during the public hearing.
Okay.
So, do you want to add something? You can.
Well, the demolition of the building, I think, is actually more expensive than $100,000. It's $250,000.
I can change that. $300? All right. I can take care of that. Anything else?
Anybody? Anybody? Any questions?
All right. That will take care of our public hearing.
All right. And I will close the public hearing. Shug, can you come up? Real quick.
Yeah.
Ally, did you get that circulated to the rest of people?
Okay.
Thank you.
If anybody needs to sign the sheet, it is right there at the desk. And Ally has it up.
Okay, so our public hearing is now officially closed. And we'll go to the public comment period. And we'll start out with the Lions Club's update on the Veteran Park improvements. So, if somebody from the Lions Club wants to, just name your full name.
Scott Smith from the Princeton Lions Club. This is Al Weber also from the Lions Club. Al's done a lot of work up at the park, maintaining it over the years on his own as well as the rest of us. We do have a commissioner in charge now of the park. We're working with them. I applied for a grant, tourism grant. Don't pay for silver rock. We'll see how that goes. We know this is going to be progress, ongoing. It's not going to happen overnight. We're hoping to get started in August, things go right. So, it's in you guys' hands. And Eric Legion, Veterans guys, got a good start this weekend. Looks awesome. Summer's going fast. Homestead's going to be here before we know it. If we could help you in any other way, we will. Ball's pretty much in your court.
Right. Well, I appreciate everything the Lions Club's done over the years. And they just keep on doing it.
We're going to work out cleaning the rest of the park up. It's not going to get touched real shortly here. And try to do what we can.
I know you've been, you've been working with Marty McCransky, council member. We've been working with you. And also Teresa's been involved in it, so.
Yeah. It's moving forward. Marty can help us with anything.
I did talk with David. He wanted to be here tonight, but he just couldn't. He mentioned that the, the only difference that he would, he wants to put a bigger rock at the beginning, a bigger boulder. And at no extra cost to the city or any getting it there too. So, in the southwest corner, he wants to put like a four or five-ton boulder on the southwest corner there instead of the regular-sized ones. So, other than that, he, everything else is the same.
Have you guys talked, council talked? Is there funds available to get started?
I'll step in here, I guess. At each of the council members, they have a picture of the landscape photo. And then on the second page is the breakdown of the cost. We did meet with Dave Hornbaker. And he went through it with Marty and myself. And obviously shared it with the mayor. And he's well, well, well versed in all of this. Between the tourism grant and the other costs that are associated with this and some of our tree fund money that may be able to go towards that, I think we'll be okay to make it work. As things go along, hopefully, maybe it won't be as expensive with the labor. But it is very labor-intensive. We need to understand what's going in there without the rock. So, I'm going to talk about some sales tax numbers here in a little bit and some revenue. So, it'll work your magic. I think it'll, I think it'll help them a little bit. But there is some extra printouts up there of what this is to look like. But just to reemphasize, it helps simplify the park over there. So, it's not going to be so labor-intensive afterwards. It sounds like there's going to be a few additional trees. There's actually a listing of the types of trees that are going to go in there. The one thing that is not on there, but we want to figure out how to deal with it maybe in the future, maybe not necessarily this year, is some benches, some tables.
You talked about picnic table. That was a great idea, especially with people that are all using the park now at lunchtime.
And actually, Dave Hornbaker had some really neat ideas on the tables too. So, he's going to be a great partner in this.
Well, you guys have our number of units. We plan on doing some more work on the gazebo. Al's put up boards around, move the name tags up higher. Because we have to stain that. We've got to get that done before winter sets in on the gazebo. And we'll work with you guys on that.
Actually, we had a question on the name tags. What, what are those for? What are they representing?
So, they're veterans that have served.
Okay.
Some-
From the, from the city of Princeton or from anywhere.
I don't know about anywhere.
So, that's what we had the question. And we just see a name, you know, we love, love the fact that they've got names up there, but they don't, we don't know what they represent. I'm sure they were all serving at some point in the foreign war. But didn't know if they were from Princeton or Walnut or-
I'll ask a past mayor. So, probably not. So, he was a big part of that park.
I know some of them are from Princeton veterans that had, that they're familiar with it from the city of Princeton here that had passed on. So, those I do know. There are some other ones that I was talking to the veterans who were working there this weekend, taking out all the vegetation and the dirt. And we're going, some of those names to include one of our veterans' fathers is in there. From, you know, veterans that have passed on. But there's a lot of the names that I don't recognize myself, only because I haven't lived here that far.
Well, how do you get your name on there then?
I know Marty had a, had a good idea of a, of a wall with names and dates in Army, Navy. They served under it for future. So, that's something a lot of small towns have, smaller than us. That's something we can look into because it does kind of look cheap the way it is now, so to speak. And there's no understanding of it if you're just visiting on what it is, so.
And the way they're placed, it's kind of a hodgepodge. They started down some posts and then moved to another post. That's why I lined the inside where they can all be put. Hadn't figured out how we want to put them. My suggestion was alphabetical, not in alphabetical order, but all the As and Bs on this one, the Cs and Bs, just so they're kind of grouped. So, if you go looking for Fred Smith, you're not going to have to stand there and look every, every which way.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
One other question I have. I do a lot of the weed pulling up there. I put the weeds in the garbage can that is up there. Can the city garbage people do a little bit better job of picking them up? Because they-
Is there stuff up there now?
Yeah.
Go up there tomorrow, first thing.
Well, they've sat sometimes for a couple of weeks.
Is this an ongoing thing? Every time you go over a pool of weeds, you throw them in the-
Yeah.
Okay, and they're not? Okay, well, we'll get on that.
And it looks kind of tacky. All right.
We'll get on that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lions Club. Appreciate it, everything you do. Do we have any other public comment? Just need your full name.
I can state my position.
All right, you can do that too.
I'm Assistant Mayor of Chestnut Street. Pete asked me one time if I was the mayor, but I said, "No, I'm the Assistant Mayor." But anyway, they started to redo Chestnut Street this, today. And of course, you've always got one that had a car that was not being moved. And so, it had to come down to calling the police. Two officers came. They still couldn't get the thing moved. Then when the officers, they, they finally found some way that would move it. And anyway, I said, "Well, why don't you just tow it?" The officer says, "Oh, no. As of July 1st, the laws have changed. They said that's legally parked." It can be there. I said, "When they're going to be doing the street?" I said, "It can just be there? I mean, and you guys can't tow it?" And, but anyway, he said some other things to me. He says, that was, kind of distressed me a little. He says, yeah, he says, "Some guy could come up and stand in your yard. And if you don't want him there, alls you can do is call, call us. And alls we can do is give him a citation." And I'm going, "Would you like to come up here and enlighten us on these laws?" I want to refer that to the chief. So, what did I tell you, Pete? But, yeah, it, it sounds to me like the Democrats have pushed through some stuff here in Springfield that ties the hands of the police. And that doesn't sound good to me. And I was wanting, you know, I was wishing, hoping the chief would be here so he could enlighten us on to what these, because I know this is a city thing, but, but the parking on the street and the fact that they couldn't legally have the car towed away when it's going to be resurf- "Oh, they'll just have to go around it." And I said, "Go around it?" I said, "That's, that's just ridiculous." "Well, we can't legally do anything." And I thought, this- He saw my frustration. And he just said, "I didn't know the half of it." Well, I want to know the half, and I want to know the whole of these laws that were changed.
Was the car eventually moved?
Because, yes.
I'm sure it will be, yeah.
It was moved.
It was.
The guy that lives in the house, he lives in the RV in the driveway. And he, every attempt to get him to come to the door, they could hear him in there yelling, but he wouldn't come to the door. Well, finally, while I was standing there talking to the officer, he did come out. He went in the house, got, he's moved the car. But it's, that's just ridiculous. You know, can't the city pass an ordinance that would say, "If the street is going to be resurfaced, you've got to get it off of there or it's going to be towed."
Yeah, we usually don't have issues. This is the once, you know, we've done this for many, many, many years and really don't have those issues. But this is a, it sounds like it's a one and a-
No. Well, we'll, we'll get you more information.
Yeah. Once the chief gets back.
He, he just raised alarms to me about laws that were passed that I don't know nothing about. I'm sure he knows about them. And I'd just like to know what they are. Because I'm not for anything that's tying the hands of the police.
Well, we can-
This is Princeton. This ain't Seattle or Portland.
Once the chief gets back, we can get that information for you. So, bring him up to speed.
Okay. And, oh, I lived on that part of Marion Street in the early 60s. There wasn't any problem.
Thank you, Dennis. Any other public comment tonight? Okay, so we'll go to the approval of amendments. Commissioner Newman.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve the amendments from our regular council meeting on July 6th, 2021.
Second.
Motion's been second. Comments?
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
McCransky.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
All right. Now, go to approval invoices and City Clerk Nelson.
For this pay cycle, we, the Department of Accounts and Finances, we have invoices totaling In the Department of Streets and Public Improvements, we have invoices totaling $118,986.33. In the Department of Public Safety, we have invoices totaling $187,044.68. And in the Department of Public Property and Utilities, we have invoices totaling $927,216.11. For grand total of $1,311,258.34. Mayor, all council members present have confirmed their reviews of all invoices and now are submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve the invoices as presented.
Second.
Motion's been second. Any comments?
Call roll. Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
McCransky.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye. Now, go to approval of, or regular business with City Clerk Nelson.
Okay, next order on the agenda is the ordinance O-21-018. This is an ordinance amending the city code to allow, or the zoning code to allow accessory residential units in a B3 business district upon approval of a specially-used petition. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this, and it is submitted for disposition.
I move that we advance ordinance O-21-018 to the second reading.
Second.
Motion's been second. Pete, want to touch on this?
This is a recommendation from the zoning, planning and zoning board. They've had a few petitions of people who live on the fringe of a business district and have had a desire, I guess I'll say, to have the flexibility to expand their garages or include, or build new garages, but also might have a living unit above or on ground level. And the current code allows this type of use to be in all residential districts, but no business districts. In Princeton, since the B3 districts essentially are along Pleasant Street from the courthouse up to Peru Street roughly, it's not too far from, a lot of those uses- uses along the lots on that road are residential in use. But they didn't feel that it was too intense of a change to allow for projects that are in a B3 to also have the flexibility to have residential units on, on their property other than their house. So rather than change zoning for those districts, they thought it would be better to require each of those projects to come in front of the board by virtue of a special use petition and weigh the merits of each petition individually rather than just have a blanket change of zoning. So in order to be a little more conservative, that's what they're suggesting, and they're passing that along to council as their recommendation for approval.
Any comments from council? The motion's been second. Call roll.
Councilmember Newman?
Aye.
Gomez?
Aye.
McCransky?
Aye.
McCall?
Aye.
Mayor Querem?
Aye.
Next on the agenda is Resolution R-21-018. This is a resolution committing fifty thousand dollars from the general fund to be used with community development block grant funds totaling together four hundred and fifty-six thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars for the Marion Street sanitary sewer replacement. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this resolution and it is submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve Resolution R-21-018.
Second.
Motion's been second. So we've had a discussion on this. Do we have any further questions or comments from the council? And call roll.
Councilmember Newman?
Aye.
Gomez?
Aye.
McCransky?
Aye.
McCall?
Aye.
Mayor Querem?
Aye.
Um, next on the agenda is Resolution R-21-019. This is a resolution supporting the Illinois Municipal Electric Agency by proposing Princeton sites for a solar energy farm. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this resolution and it is submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve Resolution R-21-019.
Second.
Motion has been second. Teresa?
Well, I will revert to Jeff if you'd like to come up and talk a little bit more about this. This is way over my head when it comes to solar, so.
Yeah, um, part of the IMEA over the last several years, they've been offering member cities the opportunity to put solar farms in, in the cities. And they've always kind of put us behind the list because of the generation we currently have. But now most of the cities have already, the ones that are interested have already gotten it. So I thought now is our time to, to try. So part of this, or this resolution that, that's in front of you tonight is basically just to show IMEA that the city supports this project, we have to turn in an application. And this is part of the application that they're asking for. We got a couple of different locations that we're looking at. And depending upon which location could make the difference on the size of the unit that potentially would be installed.
Kind of a timeframe?
Their, their plan is to have it up and running by fall of '22.
Certification process is due when?
Friday.
Friday.
Who decides what location would be chosen? Does it may choose?
Yeah, IMEA will, will come up and they'll actually look at, at the locations that we're proposing and they'll decide which one kind of fits better for what they're wanting to do.
If you had a preference, which one would be suitable?
There's pluses, pluses on both. You know, the tech park location has infrastructure already set up, but it's a smaller location. Out by the transfer station, we'd have to do a little more infrastructure, infrastructure work, but we could have a larger unit. So there's, you know, pluses and minuses of both of them.
Do you know if these other, if these units grow over years? I mean, in other communities or do?
Did you say grow?
Do they grow? I mean, if they put an initial installation in, do they ask if there's expansion plans?
Actually, Ran Tool put one in like four, four or five years ago, and they actually basically doubled their size last year.
Okay.
Through the same process.
And what's, where's the house of power used? What's it, who does it benefit?
Well, it'll get consumed here, here in Princeton, but we will not own the farm, the solar array.
But all the power that generates?
Will be, will be used here, yes.
Will that help rates?
No, no. Unfortunately, that, that's not the case because actually the, the green energy is actually more expensive than.
Well, with the talk of, you know, they're closed, you know, the state wanting to close coal plants, one of which we are part owners of with the IMEA, I mean, you know, going this direction makes, well, probably inevitable.
Yeah, yeah. And I believe I told Teresa, maybe Pete, but it was brought to our attention that if Perry State, the generating site that the mayor was just talking about, if they shut that down and they tried to replace the output of that generating station with solar, they'd have to put thirty-six thousand acres of solar to replace that.
So the, the costs are going to be considered going up?
Yeah, the more green, green energy at this point, the more green energy there is, the better chance there is of that happening.
If, if by some chance you choose by the old transfer station, and there is something where we need to expand it and anything else, would they also consider two sites? Whether?
Possibly. That's a possibility, yes.
Jeff, would this change how, you know, when we have power going down, line coming in, we're generating our own power, will that change any of that down the line then too?
Nope, not at all.
But with a solar backup, maybe we wouldn't have to turn on the generators quite as often because we can draw power off the solar or?
Well, that's, that's true to a point. The problem is if we lose power, that solar array is not big enough to handle the whole city. So it, it's basically going to shut down until you have utility power backup and. And like, like if you had a solar on your house?
Sure.
It does the same thing. If you lose utility power to your house, the solar unit shuts down.
You're simply, essentially going to supplement the power that we're rating into the city?
Correct.
I'd like to see Princeton with a solar array. That would be positive for us, I think, as a community.
Jeff, just to clarify, the cost to the city for this is?
There, there's going to be some cost to the city. I mean, we'll have a little bit of engineering. We do have to provide the step-up transformer from the solar field up to our distribution system. I mean, we'll have some labor, but that's, that's basically the extent of our, our cost.
Any other questions, comments?
I have, as far as purchasing the equipment, is that already in works or is that something that you can go through more grants or, or any agency that will cover some of those costs with so many kind contributions from the city?
You talking about the, the equipment the city has to provide?
Yes. You know, I mean.
I, I'm not aware of that. I mean, I, the other cities that I've talked to that have done this, you know, they, they put out the money for those items. Now, the solar field and, and installation of it, all of that is, is taken care of. The city has no expense there.
But we have to be chosen first, right?
Correct.
Okay, let's get that happen.
I'm glad on it.
All right, good. Anything else from council? Okay, the motion. Thanks, Jeff. The motion's been second. Call roll.
Newman?
Aye.
Gomez?
Aye.
McCransky?
Aye.
McCall?
Aye.
Mayor Querem?
Aye. Thank you, Pete. Now go to City Manager, report.
First thing, in your packet, you have the, a monthly financial report. It is from April. This is the latest one that we have. So as you go through the report, you'll start to see, we start to hit that hundred percent for revenue expenditures. There will still be, when we get the mayor report, there's still a little bit of a lag with getting some of the bills and stuff submitted. So some of these will not be complete numbers, even though it is the end of our fiscal year, at the end of April. So I would have you look at page two. Starting page two, you go through the general fund, revenue expenditures, and go through, you kind of see where, what I'm talking about, you're hitting that ninety, hundred percent ratio on revenues and expenditures here. So it just gives a much better picture as you go through to page four. On page, let's see, page five, which is a chart, you start to see where the, the line graphs, the budgeted and the expenditures start to level out. That's what we want to be seeing. As I said, there'll be some lag getting this report completed through May still. Because there'll still be some, with these numbers that they're showing, there's still going to be some outstanding invoices that aren't quite reported in here yet. We'll get into some of the interesting ones. I'm going to touch on a little bit more in a second. But page eight, our sales tax, which we like to keep an eye on. You'll see that orange line on April is kind of skyrocketing there. So we like to see that. Actually, if you look back into March, February and January as well, they're all, all still higher than what last year's numbers were, which were higher than the previous year. So it's pretty amazing. And I'll talk a little bit more about those in a second. Hotel motel, the reporting and hotel motel tax is kind of scattered, it seems like. But the trend for that orange line is trending up. And I expect this summer to see some better numbers coming in than what we saw even last summer. Let's see here. On page thirteen, if you want to look at the police and fire activity, you have the total number of calls per Bucon at four thousand six hundred thirty-eight. Total fire department total calls is a hundred and fifty-two. Total police department calls responded to at four hundred and forty-three. And that's all. Any questions on the report? Hopefully I'll have May's pretty soon so we can get that wrapped up. We are wrapping up our loose ends on the audit for this last fiscal year as well. So all that information should be coming. I also gave you a quick summary of the sales tax. If I started rambling off numbers, it was going to be confusing. So I just printed it off for each of you. This is our internal, I guess databases of reporting for all the sales tax and the revenue that's coming in. So you can see on the first page there, comparison of fiscal year '21, '22 to fiscal year '20, '21 and '19 and '20. Just as a quick calculation, we are at about thirty-one percent minus the MFT numbers, because the MFT numbers are kind of all of them placed. So I actually removed those from the totals that I'm going to give you. We are at about thirty-one percent of where we were with last year's total numbers. So we should be around twenty-five percent since we're three months in. So we're already above where we were if you're looking at last year's numbers. So I want to put the page to your video and gaming tax. I was telling the mayor earlier, there's a gap in this. And that was when COVID shut things down last year. You'll see those, those holes there. But look at July for this year already. We're up to almost seventeen hundred, or seventeen thousand, a little over seventeen thousand for gaming just in a month. So, and the previous month is at twenty-two. So you can see the amount of revenue that was, where those gaps were last year. You, you do miss out on some, some revenue there. So it's, it's good to see some of that revenue flowing back in. We're already, we're already at sixty thousand collected last year. We only collected maybe, maybe two, if that's where COVID had a little bit more impact. Next page is your one percent share of the sales tax, which is our portion of the state's collected sales tax. Significantly, again, July for this year compared to July of last year. This year reflected two hundred and four thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars, or two hundred and four thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Last year, we were at a hundred and sixty-five thousand, twelve dollars. So already, we're already seeing that increase, significant increases. Even look at last month for June. That, that's huge, too. Next page, this is where it quite gets excited. Looking at the, the local sales tax we bring for the non-home rule. I'm going to go down to the quarter percent increase. Well, yeah. We're already, if you look at June of this, for this year, which would have been last, last month's reported numbers, ten thousand dollars higher than last year's quarter percent sales tax collected. So, and then this last month, which is July's reported, which was actually collected in May. So we're looking at May's tax numbers being higher than last year. We're at thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and forty-six dot forty-seven dollars for this month. Last year, at this time, it was twenty-six thousand, three hundred and eight. So again, we're seeing the typical eight to ten percent, or eight to ten thousand dollars higher than where we were last year, which was higher than the year before. So all positive. The other one that's really interesting on that first page that I caught today was our income tax. Look at where we're at for fiscal year '21 to '22 at three hundred and forty-three thousand versus where we were last year total. We're already making huge strides there. So we're going to surpass what we budgeted. So. Any questions on that stuff? All positive.
I'd say that the non-homeless sales tax, the quarter percent, and that is being used with our street program, that referendum passed and that money flowing to our streets. And so we're getting our street work underway this, this, this week. A lot of streets being repaved, and that's your kids' sales tax dollars at work. So continue to shop Princeton first because those tax dollars goes to our streets. The more that you shop Princeton first, the more we can put in our streets. Thank you to everybody for that.
On that note, do you want me to run through these or you want to keep them?
I can give you a quick briefing on where we're at with our street.
Yeah, I thought it'd be good for quick.
Because we're like, they're hauling balls over with this. They're moving right along. Advance says, starting tomorrow, they're going to start milling Thompson Street with paving commencing this Thursday, Friday. That's all of Thompson Street. The next week, they'll probably, they'll come back and readjust the mantle covers and the water valves. Flowerhouse Alley, Autumn Ridge Court, that's been milled. And we actually had to repair a sanitary sewer in the alley behind Flowerhouse. And then we had some base repair over on Autumn Ridge Court, which we have accomplished. That will be paved tomorrow. Today, we milled North Chestnut, North Church and B Street, and that will be paved on Wednesday of this week. So they're, they're moving right along.
They told me they'd be in tomorrow.
Pardon me?
They told me they'd be there tomorrow.
I was told the day would be Wednesday, so. Maybe it was that car that was parked. So North Vernon, Randolph and Sixth Street, they're complete. North Vernon was from the south to B Street. Randolph was from central to Franklin. That was a nice long stretch. And then Sixth Street, that's just a four hundred foot north of Thompson. It's like a little stub there. They, they took care of that already. So. And then I've been working on getting the crosswalk at the senior center repaved, and then also that nasty dip at twenty-eight East Marion. I'm sure you guys have seen that dip. So I was, I was informed this afternoon that that will be accomplished this Thursday. So it's looking good.
Thank you.
The only other part of my report was on Marion Street for the update, but I think we pretty much read that.
Any comments or questions for council? Okay, so on the mayor's report, we got a board appointment. Move.
Move that we appoint, have the board appoint Jerry Newman to the OSF St. Clair Medical Center Community Advisory Board for a three-year term, commencing as determined by the OSF St. Clair Medical Center Community Council bylaws.
Second.
Motion's been second. So Jerry has been, he has sat on, in every Parry Memorial Hospital Board since he's been on the city council. So this is just like a natural progression to appoint him to the new St. Clair Community Advisory Board. Any questions, comments? Call roll.
Councilmember Newman?
Yes.
Gomez?
Aye.
McCransky?
Aye.
McCall?
Aye.
Mayor Querem?
Aye. Do we have any old business tonight? Any new business? Any further public comment? Okay, I entertain the motion to adjourn. Any comments?
I move that we adjourn our regular meeting this evening and reconvene our next council meeting on Monday, August 2nd, 2021, seven o'clock at City Hall.
Second.
Motion for the second. Call roll.
Councilmember Newman?
Aye.
Gomez?
Aye.
McCransky?
Aye.
McCall?
Aye.
Mayor Querem?
Aye.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye. This meeting is adjourned, and thank you all for attending.
Good job.
All right, Dave.